is absent Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Hayward.
Here.
Ms. McThebola. Dr. Poochie Bender.
Here.
Dr. Robinson is absent. Ms. Scarpelli.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson is absent. Ms. Rundell.
Here.
Need to turn this on? I'm turning your mic on.
Uh, Mr. Corey, will you lead us in a flag salute?
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on July 27, 2022. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the administration building on the same date. Copies of procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Ms. Scarpelli, will you read the mission statement?
Yes. The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education, in partnership with the supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. So in front of you, you'll see the board self-evaluation. There's nothing, you know, crazy in there. You can all read it. If you have any questions, we can talk about it. I think the one thing that really stands out or would stand out is the board operations, page 10. So that goes along with our structure. So I think we can probably go into that first. If that's okay with everybody. Want to go through it for a minute? If anybody has any questions or comments? They allowed to keep it? Yep. So we want to start a conversation about our board operations. So currently, we operate as a committee of the whole. Do you know what that looks like? So really, if we're talking about modifying it in any way, I think first we need to know what we think is wrong with it. And like what, what the problem is so that we can come up with a solution. So, does anybody have a comment or about that?
The first comment is mine. The board should look at a revised liaison committee meeting scheduled for Cal.
So.
That was, that was a comment of mine because I think Cal works really well, but I think it can be better, you know? And unlike the, the regular board agenda, which is very, very formal and approved, the Cal meetings can be changed a little bit. And so I took that comment and I made it, translated it, I made it as a goal, as part of a goal for a slight chance to Cal and I wrote, which I'll go over before.
So just so that we all like are on the same page, like what do you think would need to change? What, what is not happening at the Cal that you would like to see different?
All right, so for Cal, we have one representative for each of the meetings. In some cases, it's up to that representative to call the administrator to say, what's going on on, at the Cal meeting? Do you need me? Well, I'll give you myself. I'll call up the special services director and saying, is there anything that I need to be informed of that's coming up on Cal? And she might say, no, I want to explain whatever's going on, blah, 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 blah. All right, so I've settled, technically I've settled the Cal agenda. But as far as the board knows as a whole, they have no idea that the board is involved in doing that. You know, even though it's, it's, it's a Cal agenda, so to speak, you know?
Yeah, my understanding of the Cal versus even just what you said was the Cal is we all, we're a committee of the whole, so we learn all of the information all at the same time.
Right.
Not the liaison, sort of a.
But somehow the liaison should know what's going on. So sometimes it'll be, can you explain what went on at the meeting? Can you do this at the, you know?
That's not really a Cal meeting, right?
Yes, it is.
If I, I'm not sure if I understand, so for clarity?
Yeah, I need a lot of clarification.
You're saying, if I hear you correctly, you're saying that as a whole, the Cal, you're still speaking to, okay, like special services.
Right, right.
So I'm curriculum instruction and I don't have conversations.
Right, because we don't, we don't do that, yeah.
It's supposed to come out, am I, am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah, sort of. But by the same token, for example, let's say in curriculum and instruction, on the agenda, there's going to be X amount of books to look at. I think, what I think the Cal should have, should be, is that the person who's the liaison to that committee should speak to the administrator, in this case would be Greg, and say, what books are coming up? Are they all math books? Are they high school books? So as a board member, they're a little more familiar with what's going on the agenda. So when we ask a question, you're not only asking it of the administration, you're also asking it of, and I hate to use the term, the committee person. Because somebody, somebody on the board should be part of.
But we're not having committees.
Well, we're not having a committee, we're having a liaison person.
But we're not even going to.
Yeah, we're, we're not, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So I agree.
From an understanding perspective, we have a Cal format and we have a lot of liaisons doing different things. It sounds like what you're asking for is a, maybe we have a more formal reporting in of liaison activities. Like we, we all go to HSA meetings and things like that and sometimes there's things brought up and sometimes there's not.
Right.
You know, and it might just be, I went to the HSA meeting, nothing new to report. But that way everyone would be aware that that HSA meeting took place.
Yeah, because it.
That, what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's more like.
Liaison's reporting in, I think is all we're saying.
I think I'm also think, thinking, not only of the board, but of the, the audience that's listening. It's almost sounding, and you know, sometimes we see it written on Facebook, the board doesn't do anything, they just listen and they just say yes, and that, that, that. Well, it's not true because we do ask the questions. So if at a, at a Cal meeting, if, if the liaison person says, I spoke to Greg about the books, may not say anything else, but at least they know the board is involved in running the school district, so to speak.
I have a question to that, because I don't feel comfortable as a board member reaching out to an employee.
Can you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry. I don't feel comfortable as a board member reaching out to an employee other than to the superintendent. And I think that that's kind of overstretching our reach to speak to.
That, that, that's taking the, the, the legal sense in the strictest term because.
Yes.
As, as an administrator, as any of our administrators, the superintendent has given, and the superintendent knows who are the liaisons to those committees, he's technically given everybody permission. Now, if you called up Greg and asked him the question, you're the liaison. If I called up Greg and asked him a question, that's not my, that's not my job. And Greg would say to me, did you get permission to ask me the question or whatever? But as a liaison, you know, take it down to the point when we had a committee. You know, nobody told us we had to have a committee. It was the administrators who called the committee and the board members who went to the committees. You know, not everybody had to call up the superintendent and say, we're having a committee because the superintendent would know that the liaison would be speaking to the administrators. So.
And typically, the superintendent is involved even with those committees?
Right. And he may, and he may actually be, he may actually say, in the case of a lot of books, you know, Greg, we're doing a lot of books. When you speak to, to Angela, I want to be there, you know, we're going to have a joint meeting on all the books or something, if that's, if that's.
And I think, I would personally prefer it to come from that office to us because they run it. And they should be providing us the information and I don't.
Well, right.
And then we can ask our questions and then bring those questions and conversation to the committee.
Yeah, the direction makes.
To the public.
The direction makes no difference, you know, whether, whether the, the administrator calls up the liaison or the liaison calls up the administrator for something.
But some board members might not know the functions on the inside to know when things are happening, right? So.
Well, shouldn't that be at the beginning? You know, if you're a new board member, you may not know what the, you know, curriculum committee does, but at the beginning of that appointment, we might say, hey, let's have a quick meeting to discuss things and.
Right.
Know what the process is.
Right.
I think we're all kind of talking about the same thing here and I, I think, you know, you're, you're being a little more formal with the communication, you're, you want to be a little more.
I want to be a little easier, yeah.
You know, all these are sort of standard functions of schools. And if we all agree to sort of just be a little more specific on reporting with it, I, I think that makes sense.
That's why I agree with.
Yeah, the committees are decided at the beginning of each year.
They are, but we, I mean, I think I even said it in my email, like because it's not gone on really since I've been on the board. We don't meet like that. We don't meet with liaisons to administrator, we get told.
And I'm saying, just in the beginning, right?
Right, right.
So, well, you also have to back up that for two years, we didn't meet.
True.
I mean, you know.
But I think it was, it was at least explained to me that it would be said in, in a committee of the whole meeting so that we all learned it at the same time. It wasn't just one person. And Brett's been pretty clear that he really only talks to the board president and then that gets disseminated, I think.
Just say again, a little more formally, you know, on, on the good side, if we had a board member, they would meet and do this. But let's say we had a board member who wanted to ask a thousand questions, that person shouldn't be calling whatever admin 24 times a day, seven days a week as their personal information center.
Agreed.
Right? So you're really talking about having a balance there and.
And I think that's the balance. I think that's the balance that Rona's speaking of is the fact that if there's an organized committee meeting, the liaison comes up with the information and then reports it back at our meetings. And then we can also address the questions that we might have had during that meeting and, and the answers that we were provided. I think it just provides for clearer information to be shared, more transparency.
And it's not necessarily for each of the committees. For example, I guess with Mike's committees, anytime they met, I mean, if Mike is going to tell Buildings and Grounds exactly what's going to happen, hopefully the Buildings and Grounds liaison will at some point say to Mike, hey, Mike, how come you're spending money on swing sets as opposed to basketball courts? Somebody's going to ask those questions as opposed to Mike just announcing, we're doing swing sets at the meeting. And the liaison would say, you know, I, we spoke about whether we should do swing sets or basketball courts, you know, and get more information from each board member technically to pass on to the rest of the board.
Okay, I guess, I was on the board when we started, we were committees and we switched to this committee of the whole structure. And one of the main components for switching it was the lack of trust amongst board members and these, what's going on in these committees, where not all the board members are there and who's on that committee and what are they talking about and what are they then telling the administration they can go forward with and not, when it's up to the whole board to decide that. So we switched to the committee of the whole to actually make it more transparent and more trust building for the board members. So I, I guess where I'm a little confused, and it could be because I was the board president for a few years, so I had, was privy to information. I just don't know what is not being said in the committee of the whole meeting that it would be said at this meeting that you have with the liaison. Because whatever happens with that liaison and that, you know, administrator should be completely disclosed to the rest of the board members. So I'm not sure what, we wouldn't be asking unless it's personnel related and then that's closed session items. But I'm not sure what we would be discussing in that one meeting that wouldn't, shouldn't be discussed in public. Like, like to your point, if Mike is proposing to build swing sets and not basketball courts and vice versa, that's something that we should be discussing in public and as a, as a board with the public, knowing what the board and the administration is doing with our funds, as opposed to not.
But if you don't, the liaison that asks questions, if the liaison just sits there and says, Mike has the, the answers to everything and I'm picking on Mike because he deserves it really. You know, a list of things, does, does, the, the problem exists that the other board members that are sitting here don't necessarily think of another question to ask.
Let me add to that, Rona. How about the fact that we get the agenda on Friday, at the same time as the public, right? And then our board meeting is Monday evening. So there's not a lot of time to ask or to go to.
The agenda is set on Thursday.
Well, we don't see that, you do.
I do, because that's my job, right?
Right, right. And that's, that's the way it should be.
Yeah.
So if it's set on Thursday and then they need to, they need time to finagle and put it all together, then Friday is like, that's when you can see it, right?
Correct. So if we're getting it on Friday and we have a meeting on Monday, there's not a whole lot of time to digest, think about it, speak to each other if there's a question, speak, find someone to speak to. I mean, like these guys are busy all day. I'm, I'm trying to be fair to the, to the staff.
I think that's why, like, the redundant meeting doesn't feel right to them either, on my.
Generally speaking.
Then we should have, maybe the agenda should be set maybe on Wednesday to have it ready.
Do you think that that would make you read it?
Well, it gives you two more days.
One, but.
Well, the truth, can I ask, what is the point of the one more day? Is it that you as a board member can then make something pulled from the agenda before it goes to public? I'm a little confused, what, what does it matter if the public gets it this same time or gets it a few hours?
I didn't mention the public getting it at all.
You did, you did.
I said that we get it the same time. That's it. That's the way, that's the way it's been, that's the way it is. So, but that's not my concern. My concern is the fact that you all, you two may have privy to the information, you have that great dialogue, you ask questions, but the rest of it is not getting disseminated to us until Friday and then we meet right away on Monday. People have lives on, on Saturday and Sunday, I'm sure. Not that this does not come as, with an important role, but things do happen. And I just think that for, I happen to agree with Rona, you've been asking for committee meetings and I think it's just nice to have that dialogue, the conversation.
If I can, I think Rona wants the liaisons to be more active.
More active.
Yeah, and that's fine. But that's not the money.
It's the same thing.
It's not the same thing.
Well, I'm agreeing with whatever she's asking.
So what it's not, you wouldn't have a committee meeting.
It's limited.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the same thing, the truth is, we did move the meeting to Monday when we had it on Tuesday, when we had our meetings on Tuesday. And it's fine that we moved it and everything, but nothing else shifted. Everything stayed the same building up to that. When we, when we sent our information to the board president on Sunday, here are my questions for the agenda. It gave Monday a chance for the superintendent, for the assistant superintendent, for the business administrator to find out the answer to tell us so when we had the meeting on Tuesday, every board member knew the answer because they got the answer, you know? I think the questions, you know, I don't think the questions have, have been bad or good that have come through, but sometimes on a, on a big question, I'm going to pick on Mike again, sometimes stuff comes at the last minute and we're at the meeting and we're handed something to read, you know, at, at a meeting. And that's, and that's very, and it's very difficult. It's a lot easier if you can read it on the weekend, send in your question for the administrator to take Monday to answer your questions properly, for us to be able to read them and come to the meeting, you know? But that's what we did by changing the date of the meeting. We never changed, I think Angela said, we never changed the previous part. We changed the ending part, okay, we're not going to meet on Tuesday, we'll now meet on Monday. But we didn't move anything else forward on that.
Okay, so a solution would be to move agenda review to Wednesday and send out the.
Agenda on Thursday. Yes, so you have another day?
We're still getting walk-ins anyway, Rona. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast is that it's Monday, last minute, but.
Well, I'm not even talking about stuff that comes at the last minute, I'm talking about the likes, you know, we're asking the administrators to answer the questions as fast as they can on Monday because we're having a meeting on Monday night. And, I mean, I'm home.
They haven't done it.
I'll get, I'll get it at home, but not everybody works from home or not everybody opens up their emails at five o'clock and has to be at six, at a meeting at six o'clock to read all the answers, you know?
So is that a solution to that problem?
I don't know, there's, I have a lot of solutions.
I, I don't know that that's a solution, or maybe it is. Just thinking, watching procedure, I spent the last couple of months trying to understand the flow, the ebb and flow of all this. The idea of having a liaison, I would look at that as a board member is, that's kind of like our board advocate, right? The person who is tasked with becoming as close to a subject matter expert without getting into the actual operational flow of whatever task you're doing. And Sharon, I appreciate hearing about like how committees have kind of became their own micro boards and if you don't have a clear, this is going to be approved here because you're talking to maybe almost kind of a sort of a quorum that.
You're close, yeah.
I'm glad, yeah, so I'm glad I'm on this board that's doing everything out in public. At the same time, the, the Cal meetings are, I, I want to say like Fast and Furious, I feel like there could be a little more dialogue and a little more like, hey, I'm, okay, so I did the Fourth of July parade, great, like you heard about it because that's all that I had to do. There wasn't a lot of dynamics, we were not approving curriculum for it, so it was an easy thing to just, you know, kind of sheepishly raise my hand and said, it's still the fourth day of the month, yeah, like, please show up. But that liaison, nobody else is wondering how we're going to go, go through that process. So something like that where we can all look to each person for their task and their role and give the administration that policy refinement as we go, then that allows me to approve based upon our perspective. Not if we are doing it, but it's really that we have the same concept of we're, we're on the policy approval side of it and you're just looking through that lens. If you wanted to be on the other side, it just kind of muddies the water with our role versus not our role. So long-winded feedback of, I, I like that idea, I don't know that that is what we have. I don't know that establishing committees is going to get us there either. But it definitely would make me feel more confident that the board in some form or capacity has a, like, ground level view on these important issues and their specific silos that we have to improve.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that viewpoint. I think, and this might not be a popular opinion, but a lot of the board conversation does depend on our board, right? If you are going to ask a question, if you are going to read the agenda, if you read the weekly, if you read the things you're supposed to read and do, we could probably have a more robust conversation. But if not, like, we can do as many committees or things as we want, but if no one does it.
So it sounds like we need a commitment from the board, whether new or old, or who's coming in and out, to report in better, better communicate, better communication is really what's being discussed here, whether it's called a committee or a liaison or whatever, we, we just want to be able to say, I was here and I discussed this.
Here's, here's, here's the other thing that, that I haven't quite figured this out. I started, I was looking through our policy manual and I remember our old policy manual because I know that better than the new policy manual and I couldn't find it anywhere. I was looking for something that said what goes on at a meeting. I was looking for a regulation. We had a regulation that specifically said, and again, whether it was a committee or a non-committee, it said what the committee does. The curriculum committee does X, Y, and Z. The negotiating committee does this, this, this. And it was a regulation.
Like didn't get transferred over?
None of it ever got, I looked, every policy that I looked at would have it, none of them had regulations. Now, I looked at the policies that are on our, our website, you know, I'm assuming they're up to date as far as that goes. I couldn't find any regulations for any of the things that I was looking for, because there were some other things that I was also looking for. I said, oh, we had a regulation on this and it explained why we do it this way. And it wasn't there. Nothing was, nothing was there. So I don't know who took the regulate, the original regulations and translated them, that didn't just stick the policies attached.
That was like three years ago?
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, originally we were told, I thought, that the administrators were to look at the regulations, because that's who does regulations, is administrators.
I believe Strauss Esme gives.
But I didn't see any ones that were.
They're very good with giving templates or things to follow, so.
Yeah. And when I looked at some of the policies, I said, this really isn't, I mean, it's a, it's a very generalized policy, you know? But it's not the Glen Rock policy. It doesn't have the Glen Rock stuff in it, you know? So.
Yeah, I think when, I think when I was first on the board, you tasked us all with reading.
Oh, yeah. And, and you know how many people did that?
I did it.
Uh huh.
I had finances, it was fantastic.
Yep.
It's not, by the way.
But.
But it did, like.
Yeah. But if you look, if you look at whatever's in there for finance now, it's not the same. You know, certain things should, I don't know. You're going to have me rambling all night if you're not, if you're not careful on this one.
All right, well.
Yeah. But, but I'm saying, you know, that I think we, you know, we had this break, let me put it, we had this break that was wild. I mean, if you look at it, the policies that we had to approve all had to do with COVID and this and that and what you do and what you do. It was almost like everything else was by, all by itself. Whatever they gave us, fine, give us that, give us that. And whatever they gave us on COVID followed the rules and regulations that we wanted to follow. But we really didn't get into our own stuff as far as, as, so when I was looking up, and I don't have a copy of the old policies and I, I don't know if they're even available with, I don't know who would have them, whether it would be Rich that might have them or, or somebody else. The only policies that I have are 1915, 2015 I think I have on my computer. But if I look at those, those policies make more sense than the ones that are there now.
Yeah, I think that comes with a lot of background.
Yeah, well, to some extent, yeah. But you can do it with, by just putting in the right regs. As far as I'm concerned, you can have any of those plain policies that you want. If you look at the regs that to me mean, what do you do on your board?
Yeah.
As opposed to what's the policy for the district?
You know, and I think the, I just want to go back to the role of the liaison too, was the liaison also has the ability in that area that it's liaising with to actually propose. to actually propose items for the agenda. So for instance, if you're on operations, the person that's in the liaison has every right, as any board member does, to go to the board president and send an email or the administration and say, I'd like these items to be discussed at the next agenda. And some may make it just because of the timing and, you know, the time allotment because we really were limiting each area to a certain amount of minutes. But that's something that we haven't seen done, right? And then it could be that the rule wasn't fully communicated to the new board members on what to do. So that would be an interesting thing to see happen going forward is more liaisons coming and proposing items that they'd like to discuss within their area on the agenda.
Which goes back to writing a regulation that when a new board member comes on, it's one of the things you handle. You know, we talk about, you know, how do you learn to be a new board member? You have to learn how to be a new board member in Glen Rock as well as being a new board member. So if you have the list that has what each committee does, then you know. And I remember when we switched from committee to committee of the whole, we looked at our thing very carefully and we said, we can keep this because somewhere along the line it said, whether we have a committee or a committee of the whole, that's all we had to put in there. And we still had any information that can be passed out there.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing from all of you, nobody's really advocating going back to committees.
No, 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 no.
But what we are saying is we need to clarify the liaison roles. Maybe look at what the list of those are and what the responsibilities of those liaisons are.
And write a regulation.
And write a regulation. Because you're right, I did a quick search. I think Brett's doing the same thing. And I don't see anything about liaisons, very little about committees. And we should have it there so that we're doing it. I think that would make a lot of sense.
Could I add something? So a parallel direction to that. One would be us as a board functioning efficiently and effectively. Sometimes those are two different paths as a board and also along with the administration. And two, the whole fiduciary nature of us communicating out to all our neighbors, the stakeholders in this game, the residents of the town. When we set it up and knock them down in a meeting of, wow, we accomplished so much in 60 minutes, it probably seems like they're watching board policy on fast forward at home. So the more that we have this, even if it's a bit formal sounding, but you know, that liaison role fleshing out to not be a whole separate conversation but more just the 30 or 45 second blurb on, hey, this is what was actually accomplished over the last three weeks. Let me present according to this. Boom, done. And then that gives context to what happened over the last three or four weeks that we're formalizing in these meetings. And I think you'll win a lot, win the hearts and minds game with that type of process as well.
Yeah, and one other point, I think, and I think we've done a pretty good job of doing it, but whatever's discussed at the committee of the whole is then we say, this will be on the agenda for approval next time. And we, there are sometimes things that are added to our agenda for approval, but those should only be items that are time sensitive in nature. So if there, you know, hires we have to make or there's retirements we're approving, something to that nature that was not discussed or mentioned during the committee of the whole meeting, those items can still be on that regular agenda, but nothing else that really needs to be discussed. Does that make sense?
So then you basically have the two weeks to mull it over and talk about it.
So to the public, they may be thinking we're just blanket approving, but those items should have been discussed at the Cow. Right?
All right, so I guess, why don't we do an ad hoc?
To formalize the...
To write the regs and to go through?
Yes.
Does that sound...
That we still have.
Right, an ad hoc to go through what they are?
Yeah.
All right.
So you have to do a couple of board members.
So, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll put together an ad hoc and we'll try to formalize what those liaison positions are. But I guess we can drop the committee talk.
Can we see if we can find the ones that we...
Yeah, we'll see if we can find.
...on JSBA, you know, because we could, that would make a real short ad hoc.
Have any idea what year?
We'll look for them.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, that sounds good.
For what?
So I guess we can go down to board goals. That's you.
All right, so I don't have much of a voice, but I'll do the best I can. Sinead asked me to start a conversation about board goals. And the way we're going to work into this, something I've been wanting to talk about for a while, which is, which is the mission statement that we read every board meeting, which I think is very lovely, but isn't very specific, right? And so I want to spend some time and have you, lead you through a kind of conversation about that, about this mission that I do believe in and I like what it says. But I want you to be a little bit more specific about what do we mean by exceptional education and so forth. So I'm going to walk you through an activity to get your ideas down and we're going to kind of consolidate ideas and then move on to some board goals. I'm hoping maybe we're looking at like 20 or 30 minutes is what I may mean for. We'll see how much you guys want to talk. But would you hand these out to? I don't know how many there is. So if we think about the mission statement, you know, founded on educational principles, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I know, this is the, one day I don't need to lose my voice, right? Founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students. That is kind of the first half of it, right? Which is what we're doing. And then the result of that should be, we hope, to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens. Right, that's kind of how I read that. So what I want to do is I want to look at those first three things. Principles of education, partnership with a supportive community, and exceptional education. And I'm trying to focus you in a little bit with some hints here. So I'm going to give you some post-it notes and have you kind of write out what are your thoughts about the priorities of these things. On the first one, for principles of education, I want you to think about that kind of underlying principles, philosophies, beliefs that should be guiding us, right? If we talk about principles of education, there are many, right? And they have changed pretty dramatically since maybe some of us were in school, right? I think about how we respond to misbehavior of students has changed dramatically since some of us were in school, right? Paddles and such. But what are the principles, philosophies, and beliefs that guide us right now? And what guide our vision about what we want Glen Rock schools to be? The second one, partnership with a supportive community. I want you to really think about the school as a community that encompasses staff and students and parents and families. Because, you know, I think a big part of what we need to be focused on right now, and we've been talking a lot about is climate and culture, right? That we talk a lot about academic excellence, but we also need to talk about the social emotional state of our students, social and emotional state of our staff. How are we supporting everybody in this building? And that balance, right? And then for the third one, the exceptional education, think about it in terms of what a student should experience, right? What, as a member of our community, what does that, what does that look like for you? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you some post-it notes. I'm only going to give you six. You can divide these up however you want. There are three different categories. You can go two, two, two. But if I give you the whole deck, you're going to write way too much. I used to do this as an English teacher too. Give them an index card. Then they won't, they can't write too much. So I'm going to give you six. That's all you get. So think about what you want to do. I'm going to give you a marker too. And we're going to put up some posters and start moving some stuff around. So think about it while I'm handing these out.
All right, so while he's putting the last ones up on the poster there, let me explain the next step. And remember, the goal here is to write some goals, right, for the district. And typically, as you recall, you usually have three goals. One is usually a financial one, which is probably going to be the same as it's been the last several years, right? Which is, I'll let Mike deal with that, but he likes last year's. We like last year's. So that's typically that. And we usually have one about student achievement, and then we usually have something else, right? Something about community culture, something along those lines. So really think about those two as what we're trying to kind of parse out of what's on these posters. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give a poster to each of the pairs of you that are sitting next to each other. What I want you to do is kind of read through them, maybe you can sort them, that's nice about stickies, you can move them around, and see if any themes emerge, see if anything, if there are more than one theme, which I anticipate there will be, what seems a priority, what seems interesting, what seems, what we all seem to be thinking about right now. And then we'll start a conversation, hearing back from you about your poster that you kind of consolidated some information on, and then we'll talk about what do we want to set for goals for the year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It sounds like each of the three pairs have found some kind of commonalities, or at least some groupings that they've put people into. I'd like to hear back from it, and so you can all kind of share this. Again, remember, when we're trying to find things that lend themselves to goals that we, you as a board, can support, and we as an administration can support and implement over the course of a year or longer, if it's a longer-term goal. So we'll start with the president.
Thank you. So we just wrote like a summary of what we thought were all of these together, so.
We had exceptional education.
Yeah, we had exceptional education. So create many opportunities with a healthy environment with current resources to assess our kids in the most appropriate manner. What do we need to give them to create this exceptional learning environment?
Anything anybody has to say about that, or comments? I'm sorry, my voice is in and out. Anything other people want to add to that, or comments about what they have reported on?
Say it again?
Sure.
And this was what we.
Yeah, just trying to put them all together. So to create many opportunities with a healthy environment with current resources to assess our kids in the most appropriate manner. And what do we need to give them to create this exceptional learning environment? What are we lacking? Where's the gathering? We need to find out what that is.
So what I'm hearing from that is, in order to give them an exceptional education, we need to know kind of who they are and what they need?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments? Your mic's not on, so.
What other areas are we going to expose them to? We know that we want every child to graduate from here college-ready, should they choose to.
Yes.
Go to college. What other opportunities are we going to provide them with, should they choose not to go to college?
Yes, agreed.
Like the health sciences, do we, you know, or something?
So again, I hear it's about knowing our kids.
Knowing our kids.
Knowing what they need, knowing what's out there for them.
Yeah.
But don't we have to know a little bit about them in the?
Don't we have to know a little bit about them in the future? I mean, right now, we're educating a small group that's this big. When they get to be in their senior year, they're going out to someplace they don't know where. So it has to, you know what I mean? We have to be able to educate them for something for the future.
I think it's, I mean, I'm not even sure we know what their jobs are going to be, to be honest.
But I think, to your point, we need to make sure that we are always evolving our curriculum to meet the needs of the future, right? So I agree. We don't know, but I think that it needs to be evolving.
Right. That's why I think it's important for our students to have introductions to, an exposure of various possible occupations that are up and coming, because the world is changing.
Agreed, and just sort of separate but related, is in the middle school, I think they transitioned to taking all four languages, one each quarter, just to expose the kids to four languages, which I think was tremendous. Now, my kid is going to take Chinese because he thought it was interesting and he liked it. I don't think he ever would have chosen that had he not seen it.
Great. Thank you. Ed, Rona?
Would you like to drive?
No.
Okay, we had a partnership with a supportive community. This was challenging. No, I'm kidding. Joking, joking. First, we defined what a community is, and obviously, what you spoke of earlier, parents, students, teachers.
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers, right. I called it the school community and the greater community. So that's sort of community. We had a bunch of examples of what would help support this as a goal, and really, what came out to the center was better communication results in trust. And that's really, and someone had a card that said acceptance, right? So, you know, if we could build trust with the community, inside, outside, right, with all levels here, people will accept what we say more, and we'll be able to, you know, have better conversations. And I think that's a good way to get started. Now, for example, just using these cards that everyone turned in here, working together, team building with staff, or positive school, district, climate, community forums, which I think we do a bit already, parent-student engagement from parent-student, parent-teacher partnerships, and staff development research sabbatical. That's an interesting one. But any of it is, you know, increasing knowledge, increasing communicating with each other, and getting us to work together. So that's sort of the summary, is better communication.
If I might add.
Sure.
I think that the home and school connection, I know there's a positive. I think that if we can continue to build on that, I think that's really, you know, important. It's vital for the success of the school, for the students, and as a whole.
I think in the case of supportive community, considering a town like Glen Rock has more parents in the district without kids in school than parents with kids in school, yeah, the teacher-student community is great, but you have to include the people that are totally outside of the school system to be part of your supportive community as well.
The greater community?
Yeah.
Parents, the last two years have been functionally in the classroom. So, one, you might feel like, as a parent, you're a little on school burnout from that. And two, all that communication, that attention's going to the parent of the third grader, the parent of the ninth grader, and you only have so many hours in the day. So the rest of the community outside might be losing out, just even the volume ratio-wise, let alone just volume in total, so.
And not to talk about it, but we did mention a lot of things that appear on Facebook. It starts off being negative, and whether it's a parent or a non-parent, once it starts off being negative, it stays negative as it goes on. So you want to have more and more people included in that supportive community.
Yeah, I think, you know, regardless of Facebook and meetings and people coming in and out, there are so many great things happening in this town and this district. And, you know, people underestimate the good of what's going on. I think on one side, we don't show enough of that. We've done a lot of it. We present awards constantly, and there's great things happening with students. But, you know, to sort of go with the Facebook, the issue I think with Facebook is just that it's quick, right? Something comes up and it explodes in a day. And if there were a way to, not to try and defend, you know, our job is not to defend or attack. Our job is just to clarify, clarify issues, because so much misinformation comes out. That, to me, is one of the biggest issues with communication. It's misinformation. And I think as a board, we've all done a pretty good job of agreeing or disagreeing on things. You know, none of that's at issue. It's just misinformation that causes problems, for the most part, from what I can tell.
Well, I think you're, I think that you're right, though, with the community forum. I think that it needs to be more of community reach from within, right? The school district has to be more involved in the community events, and, you know, community leaders with district leaders, things like that.
I mean, if we're going down the road, you know, one of the things I've heard is, you know, meetings are boring. I don't like to watch, well, no one's forcing you to watch a meeting, and I get, we have a specific format we all have to follow. You know, I've heard people saying, "Well, why are you doing this? Nobody knew about it." I'd say 99% of the things we've talked about are over multiple meetings before they ever get voted on, and most people, a lot of times, don't hear them. So if there's a better way to communicate that out to people, then we should do it. You know, agendas are online, the minutes of previous meetings are online. Everything we ever do, every decision we've ever made is online. It's out there. So it's tough, because you got to figure out what's the best way to get information out. That's what it boils down.
Before we move on to the other group, just want to move us along here. I do want to reemphasize the things that we're doing moving forward. Like, I know that you're concerned about the community and the board relations and the community. We're also very much focused on, especially these first few days of school, when the teachers are coming back, over the course of the next few months, on supporting staff. It's been a really rough couple of years for staff members and for administrators. Those principals, especially those elementary principals, have been really on the front lines. You know, they're the only ones holding these buildings together when they're out, with however many subs. And it's been a rough, rough go. And so when I'm thinking about a supportive community, we have to support them as well. Our principals, our teachers especially. And so we have, as you know, initiatives coming up with the climate survey, and with the DEI supports, and all these things. And that is a big part of, about supporting our staff as well, because they are part of this community. And I want to make sure that that was said tonight.
Now that I'm thinking about it, maybe the word partnership isn't the right word to have in there. It's all of us in a supportive community. We're not partnering, we're not a separate entity, we're not something else. We're all part of this. Or maybe inclusive of a supportive community, or something.
The term stakeholder is used across project management. People are stakeholders for the different roles they play. Partnership implies that you put in your 10%, 10%, 10%. But a student's not putting an equal share.
Best student.
Yeah, they have, everybody has a different thing, but they all have a, they're all a stakeholder of this process, and it just kind of puts a different light on it. Facebook is Hyde Park, virtually. Like, you can go into London and say, I just want to comment on this, say that the Queen has 11 toes and she's a lizard. 300 years ago, they cut your hand off, but that, except for that one part of Speaker's Corner. So people, after a while, feel the need to speak out. They want to be heard. They want to express a thing. And if we, as our board, in our, quoting boring process, don't provide people that opportunity, that access, then they will find a place to do it. And it's. And it's, I think, on us to some degree to say, these are the guidelines that we're structured and required to meet. But just having that one Saturday morning this past fall, I thought was very helpful, because it opened up, early in the winter, rather. It opened up an opportunity, set a precedent of what we, as a board, and as an administration, are capable of doing to bring in some of that dialogue to a place where we can do something other than just hit the mute button on our Facebook feed. So...
All right. And the last group, principles of education, right? That was your poster? Okay. You want to go ahead and talk about that?
I just talked a lot. We broke it down into two silos, essentially. So we had students first, the whole child, and all students. And those both, we pulled them together with equity, ethical approach, equal opportunities, support for all as needed, and current knowledge base and life experience. That as a focus on the student themselves. We put them separate. Aside with that, safe and secure schools for learning, bridging down to empathy, and then challenge thought at all levels. And I'll read it. "The underlying principles include all past works that still hold true and future needs of the students." So bringing in new things, but relying on the foundations that have been part of the principles of education. So looking at something as simple as the building, the class schedules allowing students to function, and then focusing on, you know, the broad needs of a single student, and also the deep needs of the student body.
Thank you. Comments, feedback about that? So what I'm hearing you all, of these three groups, I'm hearing a lot of, we need to know the needs of the students, right? And that resonates with me a lot, because the past couple of years were so disruptive to so many students' lives that sometimes we might not know them real well, right? Or their academic needs, or their social needs, or those things. And I think we need to do a deeper dive in knowing our students well. That seems to, I think, follow from last year's student achievement goal, which was a culture that ensures every student is treated equitably, without bias, when provided opportunity, and the highest level of learning achievement. Develop a viable, relevant curriculum through effective instructional practices. We've done a lot of work on curriculum this year, and I feel much more solid about that. And I think the next step is looking at where are our students, right? We have to do the Start Strong data, but that's only a few subjects. We really need to do a lot better about understanding where students are with these interruptions they've had in learning, with these interruptions they've had in social growth, with these interruptions we had in behavioral growth, those kinds of things. So I think that's resonating to me, is we really need to know our students better. And we could lead a lot of good work with that, with staff, with students, with teachers, with educational specialists, about developing better ways to assess where our students are and what their needs are. Feels like a good direction to go here. And the other one that I'm hearing a lot about, well, is about climate, right? It's about trust, it's about supporting our staff and communication, and safe and secure buildings, all of those basic needs that we have, but moving beyond the basic to developing a positive school climate, you know? And I think there's a balance there. I'm thinking especially about the high school, where there's such a pressure of academics and of grades. But also, we've been spending a lot of time talking about social, emotional learning. But are we balancing that well for everybody? For our staff, for our students, for our communities? And I think there's work to be done there. That would be good goal-setting room as well.
Greg, can I add? I think it's important to recognize that our parents also need guidance, and maybe to be educated in some of the areas for the future for these students, right? Parents need to understand that while we provide them the best, absolute best education we can, their child may not decide to go forward academically, in academia, right? They may decide to go a different route altogether. And that we have to build acceptance, that that's okay. I don't know a starving plumber or electrician, do you, right? So there's many opportunities that our kids can have. There's, you know, and parents need to be informed as well that we have these things to provide our students with.
So, Sinead, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to keep talking as a group about these things? Do you and I want to sit down and kind of make some of these, and feed them out later on? Do we want to come back to them and have them ready to go at the next board meeting?
Do you guys feel okay if Greg and I take this and write some things and send them out? Or do you want to keep going, or...
We can change them after you send them out.
You sure can. But instead of like sitting here and writing the whole thing out, if we kind of agree with where we're going, we all come in tomorrow and...
Yeah. Let me look at my calendar, but tomorrow or Friday?
Yeah.
Either one. Just not Thursday. I'm going to DC and Jay on Thursday.
Yeah, fun. Yeah, so we will get that together and we'll send it out as soon as we can, maybe get it done quickly. Does that sound good? All right.
The next board meeting, maybe we could have a discussion about them, so...
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Sinead, then we would be establishing goals for the school year?
This coming school year, '22, '23. Yeah, until June 30th of next year.
So these are district goals that we're discussing?
These are district goals.
And then board goals, are we going to work on them later? We could do that afterwards. It doesn't have to be before or with, it could be separate.
Yeah, last year, one of our board goals was the training.
Trainings.
Was the training that we wanted to do as a board. And we did that.
DEI.
The DEI committee.
Mental health and all of them.
Oh, the community.
The third one.
The community event.
I just ask one question on this. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we discuss, and it sounds really good. And I just keep thinking, you know, whenever we have any kind of presentations, and I don't care whether it's a guidance presentation, or an elementary presentation, or a special services presentation, you never get the right number of people coming out. So, you know, you expect to have 100 people showing up at these, and you get two or three parents that come to these things. As a, under the word supportive community, how do we get that information that we're giving to people? Let's say it deals with mindlessness, or it deals with climate, or something like that. How do we get it to the other people that should be coming to the meetings? Because I know lots of times, you look and you say, "Oh, Tuesday, I can't make it, because something's on television on Tuesday and I don't have to be there," you know? Or whatever, or "I come home late that day, I can't go to another meeting that night." Things like that. And they wind up missing a meeting, and not getting the information that they really needed. I don't, you know, I'm not saying it's all part of this, but somehow we have to be able to...
There's a couple of things you said there. You know, generally, council meetings and board meetings are all on glenrocktv.com. I happen to know that one. They now put all the planning boards and the zoning boards up there, so, you know, I mean, I assume you're talking about CPAC or some of that stuff.
Well, but that means you have to be at the meeting.
They are recorded, not all, not CPAC.
Yeah, and we don't want to go nuts doing that for every little meeting, but if there's something specific, maybe you want to record it.
Well, you know, when we had the Zoom meeting, we had 50, 60 people, you know?
Might have been a lot of content.
How many people do we have at this meeting?
Rona, do you remember back in the day?
Sure.
We had quarterlies that went out to the whole community.
Yeah.
Right? It was a great way to showcase all the great things that our schools were doing.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, the spreading of the information throughout the entire community. Many seniors don't have, live in Glen Rock, don't have students in the system, don't have nieces and nephews, don't have grandchildren in the system. But they should know what's happening, because their taxes are paying for that, right? So maybe we should look at going back to having those quarterly news blasts, right? And I don't mean electronic, I mean, they actually went snail mail, right?
I don't know.
Some districts still do that.
How does the town disseminate to their, they do everything online, right? They don't do anything in the mail, right?
Yeah, and I think that's expensive, and could show the people throw it away just because it's trash, right? Like, that's what it looks like to most people.
It's a community outreach way of going. I don't, like, it's a suggestion.
No, I know.
And many districts do it locally, just out there.
And I don't know, maybe there's a possibility also. Now, the town puts out, every week, they put out a borough newsletter. And I often think, why isn't there something about what's going on in the schools?
I was just going to suggest, maybe we can coordinate, reach out to the town, and they can include a link on their weekly blast that they send out to the community? No, I don't, and I'm assuming that goes to pretty much every resident that's signed up to get it.
That has an email.
So, and that seems something that would be easy enough, that there could be a link, even if it's just to our latest board meeting, right? Not having you draft up another document that highlights things, but just at least they can see there's a link, right?
Right, because they have it, I mean, if you go to the website, it'll say, "Contact the school here." Well, if they had something like that.
Yeah, and even if they had on there our social media tags, so the Twitter feed, the Instagram feed, so then maybe the seniors, or not seniors, but even the dinks, right? Double income, no kids homes would see those feeds on their Instagrams.
That's an easy start.
That seems like that would be easy, but...
Gazette does not print anything that you ask it to.
Well, they do it, but it's three months after it happens.
Yeah.
As far as the tag, Ed, do you know who is in charge of putting out that weekly newsletter?
No, it comes from the borough, yes, I do.
Is there, are you the liaison with the town?
Yes, I am.
Well, I don't know why I'm acting like I'm the president.
No, we should.
No, the, you send something out to the board weekly, and do you send something out to the staff or anyone else, that type of thing?
The highlights.
The highlights, yeah, there's like a highlight reel. Like, that's all we're talking about, right?
Well, the highlights go on all our social media, they go to us.
But if we're already doing that, if we could somehow get it to go out to their list as well, we might get more people looking at it, that's all. I'm saying, don't even create a new quarterly report this, that, or... "Oh, we want, you know, we want to know the football team did well this week, and we want to know this is going on, and that's going on." Like, I think we have a very good format that's being used somewhere.
All right. So what, do you want to reach out and see what we would have to give them, or what format, or if it's even possible? And then we can talk about it.
If they'd be willing to do that.
Yes.
That's the other question.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not either. I mean, I can't imagine it costs anything to include an extra link of two, or...
I will reach out.
All right.
I will liaise.
We also have a board goal of...
And report back on it.
Revisiting the liaison regulations, what we do. So those are two.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the board goal from this take-up with the Cal is that we're going to revise the regulation for the liaison role, right?
Or rewrite it, or re-put it in.
Yeah.
All right, we can go through that. All right, anything else before I open this up? Everybody good? All right, so I'll open up public comments at 7:25.
You want more comment?
Oh, are you sure?
Well, I was looking at my list.
Okay.
All right, I will close public comments at 7:25. I guess we can adjourn. Motion to adjourn, Dr. Pooch Brenner, second by Mr. Corey.
Who's the first?
All in favor?
Have a nice walk.
Sorry, I just was looking over there.
See y'all next week.